Robert Hammacher abstained on February 18th. All right. Because he wasn't at that meeting. Okay, that takes care of all business. Is there any? I'm going to shift the agenda a little bit. We are blessed to have representative from the library here and instead of us dealing with the more mundane aspects of our agenda and make her sit through that, let's go to the library update. Donna, would you like to? Do we have a hand mic? Is that out yet?
I really can project.
But I am sure that you can, but I've been a pain to everybody that's been here to speak to insist that they use a microphone.
Okay.
Even the planning commission, I insist that they use a microphone. They hate me for a lot of reasons, and that's one of them.
Okay.
Albert has it.
Okay. I just have to warn you, I've been told I have an annoying voice over the microphone.
Well, let's see.
Okay, all right. So, I'm going to start.
Thank you.
Try to keep it.
Do you, we have handouts already. Is that right?
No, just for...
You all have the handouts.
Do you want us to be projecting on screen?
We don't have, that wasn't asked ahead of time, so we don't have a computer or anything, so.
I can go over everything. I'd like to start out by calling your attention to page three of the handout because that's the part that I am most involved in, and that's the library operations, the things that we've done the past year. The first thing I really wanted to call your attention to is the fact that 55% of Kennett Township residents are library cardholders. That is a really huge number. Most libraries strive for 50%, and you all are 55%. And this might be a fact that I'm the only person on the planet who cares about, but I've been watching Kennett Township grow its library card membership. Five years ago, it was 2,300, and at the end of 2014, it was 4,100. And that is 81% growth. It is, 33% of our total cardholders are Kennett Township residents, and it just really, it's a really impressive number. So, your residents are using the library a lot, and they're coming in. And so, for 2014, we offered 973 classes and special events. Attendance was close to 16,000, which is really, really a large number. We offer educational classes for children, early literacy classes for teens, we offer enrichment events for teens, and then classes and enrichment activities for adults. We loaned out almost 180,000 items last year. The one thing that is a growing segment of what we do are our eBooks. For 2014, eBooks were 10% of everything people borrowed from the library. In January of this year, they were 13%. So, if you're thinking that, but I like to hold the book in my hand, a lot of people do, but a lot of people are downloading eBooks, and it's a good service that we offer, and we have staff on hand that can show people how to do this. So, we are, in response, looking at what percentage of our budget gets allocated for that, because we typically will, we don't want to do a straight 13%, so 13% of the budget, but we're trying to think about growth as well. This is our highest growth offering, and so we're trying to put more money into it to grow it. So, that's something we're thinking about. We got a lot of national recognition over the past year. We had one of our staff members, and she's really our local rock star, get, was one of 52 library staff members from across the country selected for an Emerging Leaders program. So, she was chosen by library professionals as an emerging leader, and so that's a really a high honor, and she is right now in Seattle at a conference. And they pay her way. I mean, so it's not out of the library budget. With that comes sponsorship to attend American Library Association Conference. She went to their midwinter conference in Chicago. So, she's just bringing to the library a lot of national recognition. We also got an award from Google and from Make Magazine for our Maker Camp, which is, a lot of it is around our 3D printer, but we also, the kids make things. It's for young teens, and they came to a six-week camp, and they used the 3D printer, they used computers for programming, traditional tools, and they made things. And it's really, we're hoping to inspire kids. Technology is the future, and we're hoping to supplement the STEM curriculum in the schools, and also to offer kids something to keep those skills going in the summer. Our adult literacy program, despite budget cuts, is really thriving. Our director of that program grew the program with GED prep classes, which is a new offering we were able to do because of United Way gave us additional funding last year. And she also started onsite ESL classes at one of the mushroom houses. So, that has been something we've been able to add. And then finally, another thing I want to call your attention to is, we partner with a lot of organizations in our area. We've, for a long time, been partnering with COSACHA, which is a consortium of service organizations, to bring activities to kids in the mushroom house communities in the summer, kids who might not get out of their neighborhood at all in the summer. So, it's educational activities, and we partner with that group. And we've also partnered with Tfed, which is Together for Education. It's the volunteer organization started by Chatham Financial, and I believe it's kind of taken on its own 501(c)(3) now. But we partner with them in the summer for programming for kids who are at risk of falling behind in reading level if they don't keep up their activities. So, we work with them on activities. I think we're, we had been doing it once a week for six weeks. This year, I think we're going to maybe do two weeks every day. And Longwood Gardens has their community read, they started that last year. We did a lot of programming around that, and we just had our book discussion series last week at the library for that. So, I think that's it for our programming. As you all are aware, we voted, my board voted last year to locate the library at Waywood Road, and we're making progress on that. And we also voted to change the name and to do some rebranding. And that came about with input from our community, years of input from our community, who gave us input every day. The staff who are on the front lines were hearing input, and when the staff are out in the community, we're getting opinions from people. And it was a staff-driven process. It was facilitated by my two board members sitting behind me, who really helped the staff to participate in changing something. And while there are some negative comments on social media, the vast majority of comments that we're hearing in the library are people who are very excited about it, support it, are very positive about it. I just, outside of Tallulah's this morning, had one woman tell me how much she loves everything we're doing, and we have to remember to come to her when we fundraise for the new library, because she's very supportive. And then about two weeks ago, I was at a meeting at the borough, and another local shop owner said the same thing. "I love all your changes. You remember me when you are fundraising for anything. The library adds so much value to the community." So, that's my spiel.
Did you want the makeover?
The makeover. So, despite our plans to move in five, roughly five years, we, my board last year approved a budget for a makeover. Two reasons. It was ridiculously overdue. We've been going for years saying, "We're moving, we're not going to spend any money." Well, that's been nine years now. And so, partially to catch up with that, and partially to generate excitement for what we're doing, all the exciting things we're doing, and to generate excitement for the new library, we decided to do a makeover. And so, we hired a designer, and she contracted electric, an upholsterer, a carpenter, all local. These are all local craftsmen, and they've been coming in, and we're part of the way there. We've been living in what I call bedroom for a couple of weeks, but the end is in sight. We expect April 20th to be the date. In the meantime, I have some really awful news, and that is that we're closing for the next two weeks. Friday, Saturday will be our last day that we're open, and then we have to remediate. We have asbestos in the tiles, we will be remediating that. And I was speaking with Rusty Drumhaller, the codes officer in town, and he said he was so pleased to hear that we're doing that, that that's the right thing, to take the time, close the library, and do this remediation. So, we're doing that next week, and the week after, we're going to do, finish up the renovation. It has to close. We're having carpeting put in, electric work done. So, as much as it is a dagger in my heart, we are closing the library for two weeks. We've been doing everything we can to notify our users. They go home with a brightly colored bookmark, giving them the dates we're closed. We've had it on our website, our Facebook page, and e-blasts. We're just trying to get the word out as much as we can. When we reopen, it will be fantastic, because the renovations are taking into account how people are using the libraries. People want space, and so we've taken out some of our shelves, and we're making new space for people to sit and meet and do programming for us, and it's more comfortable. I mean, the new lobby. And please, I invite you all to come in and check it out after the 20th, and we'll also have a grand reopening, and you will all be invited to that.
I just wanted to ask one thing. I'm not saying that the name change is a negative or a positive. I don't know enough about it to make any opinion, because we really weren't involved. We weren't asked to give any input, which is sort of disappointing. I know to me, I don't know how the supervisors feel, but, you know, the Byard-Taylor name is a historic name now. It may be the right decision to change it, I don't know. I just sort of wondered why the contributors weren't asked to give input on that, especially, I mean, Kennett Township is the biggest contributor through our tax base, so why we weren't asked to give some input, not saying it's our decision to make. And, you know, we agree, the library is a great asset to our community, so we want it to remain, but we just, I just was curious why we didn't, weren't involved in it at all.
We came up with what we thought was a good process, and so, I do personally apologize that, you know, perhaps we should have done that. But we had at the time what we thought was an excellent process, which was kind of feedback from our users, staff-driven, and board facilitated. We just thought we had a great process. We did not expect that it would cause any distress to anyone. Part of the reason is Byard-Taylor isn't celebrate, I mean, there isn't a Byard-Taylor Day, there is just, we didn't expect the reaction. We didn't expect a reaction like that, otherwise we absolutely would have pulled you in. But we did have what we thought was a great process.
Okay.
And so...
My name's Jeff. I'm on the board, working with and for Donna. It feels like I work for Donna. We did have a very lengthy process. We talked to stakeholders, previous donors, potential donors, the public. We should have talked to you in hindsight. I sort of warned you in January that there was an impending decision, and you can beat me up if you want.
No, we're not here to beat anybody up. At the January meeting, you had mentioned you guys were talking about it, so we assumed we would hear from you and talk about it. That's why, you know, we were, I was just, I was very surprised when I heard the name was changed. And like I said, it's not our decision to make that name change. We just thought the fact that we do contribute money to the library, and the largest amount of money to the library, that we would have some input, some discussion.
But Lisa, didn't Rosa Quintana, I mean, we made sure that all of the township supervisors knew about it before the public announcement, and I'm pretty certain that Rosa Quintana said, so certainly not in terms of getting feedback.
She called me to let me know what had been done.
Yes, before it went public. Exactly. Before it went public, yes.
Yeah, she did.
Right.
But that was after it was done, so that's why, you know...
I mean, on the name change, a lot of people sort of say, "Why have you called it, why have you decided to call it the Kennett Public Library?" Well, it's in Kennett, it's a public building, and it's a library, and we did our research, and most customers call it that already. And the Hispanic customers, who are now 55%, struggle to even pronounce Bayard. We had two town hall meetings where we invited lots of people. Hardly anyone showed up, so there was a big sort of drama on Facebook. When we actually engaged with people, the feedback was generally very positive, and a lot of people sort of said what we'd thought all along, which is, it's always been the Kennett Library. So, what would generally happen? People would ring the switchboard to say, "Is that the Kennett Library?" "No, this is the Bayard-Taylor Memorial Library." "Is that the Kennett Library?" "Yes, it's the Kennett Library." So, to be honest, we're just clarifying something for the members of the public, and it got to the point where the more research we did, it just seemed like a completely obvious decision. We had no idea it would cause the level of Facebook furore that it did, and had we known that, we might have proceeded differently. But as I say, when we engage people in conversation, people are generally very positive. But next time, if we make a big decision like that, we'll come and talk to you guys. We just didn't think it was a big decision. We didn't think it was a big deal, and we'd said in all the communications, we will have the Byard-Taylor Memorial Reading Room. Things that hadn't been done until Susan became president two months ago. No thought had been given to storing the Bayard-Taylor collection, probably, by the board at least. So, now we were looking to get a grant to have it professionally stored and archived. So, I guess we're making a lot of progress, and in our haste to start doing things, you know, that communication fell through the crack, and I officially apologize.
Like I said, it may be, you know, maybe it is the right decision. We just didn't have any background on why it was being done, or, you know, what was pushing it, so we were just sort of surprised when it happened. And it may be the right decision, I don't know, I just...
Well, we're starting a feasibility study very soon, which will go across all of our eight municipalities. So, as you know, we serve 100,000 square miles and 100,000 people, but you are, Kennett Township is far and away the biggest contributor to the library. But in the feasibility study, if everybody comes back and says, "I would love to give money, but I'm not giving money to the Kennett Library, you must rename it," we will absolutely consider that. In all of our research, I think that's incredibly unlikely. I think more people are energized by the positive changes and the fact we're doing things, like making decisions, because our reputation has been that for 14 years, we've considered a site that we bought 14 years ago and did nothing about it. So, we've started making decisions, and when you make decisions, some people don't like it.
Let's stay with the, let's stay with that decision for a moment, if we could. Have I heard correctly that there is now a commitment by the board that you are going to move out to Waze Lane?
Oh, absolutely. So, do you want to give the history on that, Susan? Susan is the new president, she's been in place for two months, and I think it's safe to say, we now have a new momentum, a new president, a new executive committee, but you can give sort of a short version, if you like, Susan.
So, actually, I've been on the board, I think, two, coming up on two years now, so I don't have deep history on this, but I think, Jeff, you've been on it for about a year and a half. So, some of you may know, last year, we engaged in pretty intensive deliberation about where we were going to locate the library, and as people may know, there have been ongoing conversations for over 10 years about where we should locate the library. You know, again, originally, we had purchased that, the property at Waywood Road so many years ago, and then there was clearly some pushback from a lot of folks inside of the borough, a number of whom said that they would not contribute if we moved outside. So, that stopped at that point. We did have a capital campaign. That money is still in reserve restricted funds, so we have, I think, now 2.5 million, which is already there for if and when we're ready to build our new library. But over the past year, the conversation got more intense, and we had looked at a number of different locations inside of the borough, because again, there was a strong sentiment that had been expressed that we should stay in the borough. So, we looked at the Weinstein Lot, that had some encumbrances on it, there would, there had to be some movements of some parking spaces that were being used, I think leased to Genesis. Donna, jump in if I'm getting this wrong. We looked at other sites in the borough. At one point, we were potentially in negotiations with the Borough Council about possibly purchasing the parking lot behind our library. That was not going to work out, so we really did a full year of due diligence to try to find, you know, a solution inside of the borough. And we ended up putting together a matrix. We did a number of different variables, I think there were nine different variables that we used, and compared the Waywood Road site, which obviously we already owned, to the Weinstein Lot, to the possibility, when it was still in play, of purchasing the parking lot. We looked at things like parking, if we were to build in the existing location, how much a parking spot would cost, because we'd have to have an underground parking lot. For example, I don't want to bore you with all the details, but at the Waywood Road site, we'd be building parking on a single level rather than underground parking. It was going to cost us, I think, 2,000 per, now I can't even remember, but it was astronomically more per parking spot in an underground parking garage. So, the cost of parking was going to be much higher. We would be able to do 100 spots at Waywood Road, we could only do 50 in a garage. Oh, gosh, there were, so if we built in the town, probably we'd have to do two-story, because we'd like ideally to double the size of the library. Based upon all the research that we've done in terms of the, you know, the capacity and the users, we ideally should have double the amount of library. Now, again, it would all depend on how much money we can raise, but ideally, we'd like to obviously increase the size of the library. So, building in town would mean two stories rather than building at Waywood Road, which would be one story, so easier to maintain, easier to build, you could always add additions to one story, you know, more easily. So, we listed a number of variables, the cost of construction, parking, you know, access to all the eight townships. Again, because obviously, we don't just serve, you know, Kennett Square, we serve eight different townships. So, we spent a whole year, we had this extensive grid, an extensive deliberation, and obviously we also consulted the staff. We had conversations with the staff, we had conversations with our customers, obviously the board, you know, had conversations ourselves, and we did ultimately take a vote to move to the Waywood Road site.
When do you expect that you'll be coming to the township with plans and checking out all of the due diligences that you're going to need to do?
What, we did do the initial conversation, I guess, to make sure we, didn't, Donna, didn't we have a conversation about to make sure, I know we had a variance from you guys, and I thought that Amy Cornelius...
Yes.
She did come in just to confirm that that variance could be extended.
Yes.
Right, so that we know. We did some other initial investigation in terms of the site would still be usable in terms of runoff, and, you know, we had some wells there that we had a cap. So, we've already done some initial investigation. Obviously, we don't have renderings of the new library, because we don't yet know how much we can afford to build, and that's what the feasibility study will in part tell us.
I can, just one point you add, as part of the feasibility study, we're planning to have some group sessions with sort of local leaders, people in local businesses, people who run various townships, so you will be invited to those, and they will be very much sort of open conversations about what would you require from the new library, should we get the funds to build it, as ambitious as those plans are. When I joined the board 15 months ago, I repeatedly asked the question, "How much money do we have, and how big will this library be?" We didn't really have an answer. In the last few months, we've really done a lot of work and a lot of research. With our current trajectory of increasing customers, the library should be twice as big. That's very expensive. It would be prohibitively expensive on our current site, and our current site is literally falling down. Our heating and air conditioning builds every year are astronomical, because the building's collapsing. So, we can't realistically stay there. We've got asbestos problems, heating problems, flooding problems, and the Byard-Taylor collection is in the basement, which, if it floods, that'll be the first thing to go. So, we need to get out, and we really need to stop talking about it, which we have for about a decade, and the Waywood Road site was by far and away the best. Now, as for collaborating with you, we absolutely plan to do that, but, you know, we have to do the feasibility study. We have to see how much money we can find first, and you'll be involved in that conversation, because if we can't find 5 million, we're going to have to find a different solution.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. It's certainly a pleasure to have you here and to bring us up to date. As you know, and as you suggested, this township is deeply committed to the library. We've been committed by a tax for 12 years, something in that range. And we've been committed to Waze Lane, and you fellows going there. So, it's, we have a long history. Some of it's been a little rocky, and some of it's been a little misunderstood, but we're all looking to go to the same place.
Right. And we do appreciate the support from the citizens of Kennett Township. I mean, we are well aware that you are our biggest funder, and we all appreciate it.
And hopefully, you'll have a brand-new library in the heart of your beautiful township in the next five, six years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I know it'd be scintillating.
Thank you.
So, we'll go to the, take care, guys, thank you. We'll go to the, to the regular agenda here. We're under new business, the Sado Design Standards Coordinance. Do we have a motion to...
Do you want me to read it first?
Yeah.
No, I'm just going to read some right here. So, this is, the first ordinance will be Ordinance 234, and this ordinance will provide design standards for apartments in the Business Park District. And there would, I'll just read the first part of it. There was a hearing on February 18th, which enacted Ordinance 232, which amended the VP District to permit apartments. So, this ordinance will enact the standards for the, the design standards for the apartments. Does anybody have any questions on this ordinance?
The public.
I was asking the public. No, you may. Sorry.
You have a motion that it be adopted. Who?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
So, have we, have we heard from either the county or the PC on anything, please?
Yes, the county submitted their review, and they didn't have any suggested changes. The PC did review it and submitted their review, and they didn't agree with enacting this ordinance.
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm in favor as well. Passes unanimously. That brings us to parking standards ordinance. Following the same procedure, would you use on that?
This will be ordinance 235, and this ordinance is to add a provision to the off-street parking requirements for residential uses, requiring one additional, one additional off-street parking space for every two dwelling units as guest parking for a planned residential development, or residential condominium, or townhouse development. What initiated this ordinance is, we have a development on the other end of the township, Penns Manor Development, it's a townhouse development. We find that people don't park in their driveways a lot, they don't use their garages. So it was really necessary to change the parking requirements so that there is additional parking for guests.
In addition, fire trucks and school buses couldn't pass each other on the roads, because they were too narrow and combined with people parking on the roads, it created a real convenience hazard and a safety hazard. And so this ordinance is designed to address all of those issues. Is there a motion with regard to this?
Move. We approve ordinance 235? I'll second.
And I'll ask for comments. I believe, if I remember correctly, the county weighed in and had no suggestions, and the township board-
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, thank you, did have some, some concerns that it expressed both in a previous meeting here, as well as at one of their planned, or several of their planned, Planning Commission meetings.
Yes, they made a motion to deny that this ordinance be adopted.
Yes.
The operative word is future communities?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
We're not going to carry on.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I was at, we don't have a lot of examples of these in Kennet Township, and I was at the Planning Commission meeting. I think they all recognized that there was too little parking so far. I asked if there were any examples of too much parking in any of these designs, and, well, no one could think of one. So it's hard to control people's behavior, but there are some things with facts on the ground with regards to parking that we may be able to help the situation.
Yes.
In future.
If Victoria Gardens is an example, and we have spaces that we want to reserve for guest parking, but people say, well, my freezer's in my garage, so I have to park on the street.
Right.
Yeah, and that gets, actually gets to one of the questions that, and I guess what I wanted to ask was, in the discussion at the PC, part of it was also the terminology used, I mean, and how you're going to describe guest parking, and, you know, how you can enforce it, and a number of things along those lines. And so-
Well, enforcement is not really necessary in that regard. What you're concerned with is when the plan is presented to you, does it not only contain the required parking, but also the extra spaces, whether they're designated as guest spaces or not? The goal is to require them so you at least have two extra spaces per whatever the-
One extra space per two.
One, one per two, so that you, that they provide the extra parking.
Right, so that was my question, why then designate it as guest parking? Why not just call it additional parking? Why not, what, you know, instead of trying to designate it as guest parking?
I know that, in general, that parking, I mean, it won't be designated, on the plan it won't say guest, it will say additional.
It'll just say additional.
But from what I understand, in townhouse communities, the extra parking areas are considered guest parking. So they won't be designated, it's only for guests.
That's what I was asking.
When we, when we say designate as quote guest parking, that's on the plan that they submit, to show you that they're providing the extra parking as quote guest parking. In other words, they're going to lay, they're going to lay out parking spaces, and they're going to count the parking spaces, and they're going to say, you need X number of parking spaces per unit. Oh, and by the way, we meet your new requirement to provide the additional parking as quote guest parking. Look over here, these are designated as guest parking, so you know they're on the plan. It's impossible to enforce the fact that only guests can park there, and nobody else can park there, residents, et cetera. The idea is to get more parking spaces, but I, on the plan, it has to be designated as guest parking.
Any other discussion?
Chris Burkett, 818 Williams Lane. Had a-
Thank you.
Just a good question about impermeable surfaces generated from these parking spaces. It's going to increase runoff to our surface waters in the township. We already have a number of streams that are severely eroded, and I was just wondering if there was any consideration given to a requirement for porous asphalt or permeable paving in some of these additional parking spaces, so that, you know, the streams don't take the hit of all the additional coverage.
I can respond to that.
Please.
When it's laid out on a plan, and you include those guest parking spaces, the entire development, including those parking spaces, has to be, has to be designed for stormwater management to handle the increased runoff of the entire development. So when a stormwater management plan comes in along with a development plan, it's going to already include provisions to handle the runoff caused by those two extra spaces.
Okay, what I was suggesting was sort of an incentive to a developer to use permeable paving. They can, they can design, they can design for runoff, obviously, and they can throw more money at the problem, but it's still, there's a non-point pollutant load that comes off of these parking surfaces, salt areas that are used to, you know, maintain them, and, you know, just, just a thought, that if you're trying to direct someone to take a certain action, that they have a better management, you know, practice, then you might want to give them an incentive for it. Just a thought.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I mean, that, that could be applicable to any-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a design, it would be a general design standard for parking lots in any development, and that's something that maybe we can think about incorporating, talk to the engineer, see what experience he has with that type of requirement, and how it works in real life, you know, what the maintenance issues are involved with that, and, you know, maybe that becomes a design standard change in the future.
Hi, Whitney Hoffman, Beach Lane. I used to do some work for the NFL with ADA accessibility, so for some of these developments that they're thinking about, particularly for senior housing, are they making sure that there are enough accessible spots built in as we're looking at guest spots and everything else? Because I think that's going to be an issue as well.
Yes, that, that is addressed when they come in with a development.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
As well as aye. Passes unanimously, thank you. Street standards ordinance, please.
This is ordinance 236, and this ordinance will increase future new public roads to 24 feet. Right now, they're 18 feet. We found that with the 18 feet, 18-foot road width, it's a safety hazard in our township, because it's very difficult for cars and a big truck to pass, or two big trucks to pass each other. We've had a lot of incidents, people running off the road. On top of that, it's a maintenance issue for the township. We are constantly maintaining the, the road edges and the shoulders of the roads. So the county did respond, they didn't have any comments on this, and the Planning Commission did respond. They have concerns with the road width being 24 feet due to, you know, that it will change the character of the community, which, you know, I understand, but for, from the township's aspect, it is, again, a safety issue, most importantly, but it is a cost issue as well. And it will be for future roads, so it's not, we're not going to go around and increase all the roads, that would be huge cost.
Everybody change some of the problem, yeah.
But, yes, yeah, on a case-by-case basis. Roger has already widened the intersection of McFarland and Hillendale, a couple of spots in Hillendale while he's fixing the road. So on a case-by-case basis, if the supervisors agree to widen a road, whatever the issue is, then we may do that, but it will be for future roads, and only for public roads.
Okay, may we have a motion on that, please?
Move. We approve ordinance 236? I'll second it.
And we're going to entertain discussion. Anybody in the audience have a comment? Please.
Obviously, it blends well with what Chris concerns. Ted Moxon, my question would really be a continuation of what Chris was talking about with 24-foot roads. I was reading somewhere, maybe it was in Minutes or just something on the website, about recent study that showed there's a lot of salt in our streams, our local streams. So obviously, you know, the potential increases for additional salt with the water roadways. I'm not saying that this isn't a good idea in any way, I'm just saying, when we create an ordinance like this, it may have, it may result in unintended consequences, so I think it would be good if, you know, you consider that kind of thing when you're doing this. Also, I question, if you did want to go back and increase the width of an existing road, say, a 500-foot stretch of something, Hillendale or Rosedale, would the, would you be able to increase the, does this ordinance affect at all the current easements on those roads? Is it the same easement, but you're just calling for, there's a 40-foot easement, I believe, and a 24-foot width on the road.
Talking about, talking about legal right-of-way.
Yeah.
It's usually 50-foot, but some of our roads are still only 33 and 1/2 feet, the ultimate right-of-way, we call it.
Right, so what, how would that impact if you wanted to go back?
We would still have to stay in the right-of-way. We wouldn't-
Right.
-take additional property to do it, unless there was a situation that came up that required us, for some reason, to take additional property, but on all of our roads, we had at least 33 and 1/2 feet.
Okay.
So if the road right now is only 18, we still have plenty of room to widen it.
To widen, okay.
Yeah.
I might want to comment here that one of the responsibilities that we as supervisors have is to take into consideration as best we can the consequences, known or otherwise, for, for the acts that, that we, we take. So that's why this has been on the, on the table in front of the Planning Commission township-wide, and on the county, as well as with supervisors, for several months. This is not the first time this pump-up has been discussed now for four months at least, perhaps five months. And there is, we've gotten a lot of input from, from the Planning Commission, we've gotten input from the EAC about increasing the impervious coverage. So there's been, we've had input from residents and developers, the impact of this, so we've, we've taken a lot of consideration into this, and it comes down to making decision, what are the values that we think are most important for the, for the needs of the township. And anything we do, if we say no, it's going to be unintended consequences. Some of it could be pretty well-known. We're going to continue to tear down the roads, we're going to continue to bust up the shoulders, we're still going to spread the salt, the salt's still going to get washed over into the water. So all of these things are very clearly there, and if the road's a little bit wider, the road isn't going to absorb the salt, whether the road is 20 feet wide or 24 feet wide. So there's a serious impact no matter what we do. But it seems to me, when I get around to voting here, I'm going to vote for this, because I think that the consequences of not acting will be more deleterious than if we do act, and I don't think that's going to create any problems. It may be that we won't look quite as rural, although I don't think that is quite the issue, but that's about the only consequence that I would think would be negative.
And I don't know of any new public roads coming in right now. I do know of two developments that are pretty close to coming in that will be private, so that, it won't affect them, because the township won't maintain them, but our borough master, public works director, has been asking for this for a long time. It's been a huge issue for us for a long time. We do recognize the issue with, you know, the runoff and, you know, but we, we really need to address it. Albert, did you want to say something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman did mention it, but I've been a lot of the motivation for this, because it's a safety hazard, the roads aren't wide enough with the heavy travel they've experienced in the last four to five years, as well as the cars that run off the edge of the road when it breaks off and travel into the opposite lane. I've just been pushing for this, we do have developments that are already 24 feet, and I don't think it's going to change things that much, considering the safety that it will provide.
Thank you for bringing that side in. Any other discussion? Now I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And aye for me as well. It passes unanimously. Bob, are you going to handle the subdivision extensions?
I didn't see it, but I can read this. Lord House speaking, requesting the extension until October 2nd.
I move, we approve that extension.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That, unless there is something else under new business or old business that we've missed, that covers the primary portion of our agenda and leaves us with public comment. Do we have any public comment? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm always good for a public comment.
Hey, two things. We were talking about the library earlier, just a quick question, Lisa, what do we contribute to the library on an annual basis?
Yeah, it ranges from 150 up to 160, so last year, or no, two years ago, it was 100, about 165,000, but the assess, a lot of the assessments have gone down to this, in 2014, it was about 150.
Dedicated to, to tents for all.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
They, in their handout for their 2015 plan, they have us for $150,000, which is about a third of what all the townships are contributing with regards to either taxes or, or no, I guess, voluntary, I don't know.
Right.
By assessment, I would say. So about a third.
Thanks. Second question goes back to Chandler Mill Bridge, and at the time of our acquisition, the township's acquisition of that, there was an issue, I believe, that was brought up at the meeting about some engineering fees relative to, the county had released their engineer to do some pre-design on the project, and that as, as part of the deal, as I understood it, that the township was going to have to sort of pay back the county for those fees. Is that true? Is that, did that evolve that way?
Well, where we stand right now is, the county is working with the Federal Highway Commission to see if they would, if the, if the Federal Highway Commission would be willing to consider a no-build option, which would mean that the county's doing nothing with the bridge, and those fees would, we would not owe those fees. We're waiting to hear back from them. We thought it would be June by the time we hear back from them, because they can't begin the transfer to the township of the bridge until that's resolved. We ran into some of the commissioners a couple of weeks ago, and Sandy Martin, their engineer, and they said it may be longer than June, because they have to go through this formal process of answering specific questions and going back and forth, so they, they think it may be closer to September as to when it's resolved. So we don't know yet.
Did they determine the magnitude of the fees?
They said it's approximately 250,000.
Okay.
So if they agree with the no-build, then we will not have to reimburse those fees.
But you'd have to wait in order to take any action?
Right, and then the other part of it is, we asked the county, if the Federal Highway Commission requires us to pay those fees, would the county be willing to consider the fact that they're giving us the bridge and not make us required to pay the fees? So we're, we're not sure what will happen yet.
Don't fall back.
All right, all right, thank you.
So it's an active progress.
Yes.
The dance still goes.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one.
Please.
I, and looking back on your minutes on the case grant of conserva- I, in looking back on your minutes on the case grant of conservation easement, the township donated $426,000 towards the easement. The county donated 330,000, for a total of 756,000. The case easement was bought for 720,000. My question is, where is the other 36,000?
That was for, I had to break down here, actually, but that was for the, all the fees that go along with creating the easement. I can tell you, I want to tell you exactly what that is.
Yeah, I would.
I would assume that there's legal, engineering fees, closing.
I'd like to hear overstated.
Yeah, I'm just giving you generalities.
It's about 2,100 for title insurance, 2,500 for appraisal, 1,500 for easement documentation, 6,000 for a survey, 10,000 for the endowment, which is a fund to maintain the ease area, and 200 for the closing costs.
And who received those funds?
The land conservancy.
Because at one of the last meetings, the land conservancy told us that landscaping and maintaining was a whole other proposed...
That's of the trail, yes. That wasn't part of this. This was only...
So what do you need to maintain once you get the easement? I don't understand that.
I would have to ask, we don't maintain easements.
There's an annual inspection to make of the trail.
Well, no, the ease area.
No, this would be before there is a trail.
Of the eased area, there is an annual inspection.
$10,000?
I would have to ask them what exactly they do. We don't maintain easements, so I don't know what...
So who would I go to to get that answer?
The land conservancy.
And they're going to allow me that answer?
I would hope they would.
Okay. I have another question. This one is on the Miller easement.
Can you hold the microphone closer, please? It's hard to hear you. Thank you.
The county approved, let's see, 380,000 for the Miller? No. I had the wrong ones. The township gave 750,000.
We haven't given anything for Miller?
Nothing's been done on Miller. What we've done is say that we would commit a certain amount of money at some point in the future under a certain set of circumstances.
This is from county.
That was just our commitment.
The land conservancy for Southern Chester County will receive 500,000 for the purchase of a conservation easement, including public access, 125,02 acres of the Miller property. This is from the county minutes.
We don't have that.
This is public.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I haven't seen that.
That's the county's contributing.
Okay.
That's the reason.
I've heard that they would be willing, I haven't seen those minutes though.
The total cost of the project is 1.88 million. So they're, I guess...
Is that what says there, or are you calculating yourself?
No, this is exactly from their minutes downloaded. Actually, this is from Chad's Word Live.
It's from Chad's Word?
Chad's Word Live, online.
Oh, so it's a newspaper this report is.
There you go.
Okay.
No, it's from the county minutes. It's all the conservation easements and everything that they granted at their meeting. So it's not a newspaper. And one of my questions that I still have a hang-up about, the easements that are in progress, is the county is calling it the Miller property, but Kennet Township won't call it the Miller property. They call it Rockinghorn Farm. Why is that? Why can't you call it by what it is?
Well, there's, there are, I mean, the simple answer is because we choose to. But the answer is, we choose to do it that way because we are trying, a very successful help point out, we're trying to maintain the anonymity of a future grantor to the largesse of the community. And so we were trying to maintain some privacy while the negotiations were ongoing. But there has been a consistent effort to continually talk about who this is that is considering making grants to the community. And so try as I may to keep it focused on a more anon...
Anonymous.
Anonymous, thank you. Anonymous nature, it keeps coming out as to who we're talking to. So that's your longer answer.
But the county calls it Miller, but anytime the township says it, won't call it Miller.
But I tell you this, every time you come and you ask a question, I keep telling you the same answer. And so I'm going to keep doing until we have a final arrangement with the owners of that farm.
A veil of secrecy.
I'm sorry?
It sets up a veil of secrecy that...
I know you don't approve.
We are the township. We are the taxpayers, but we can't know about this.
But you do know about it.
Well, he's my neighbor.
Right, so you know about it.
And the other one I know about because I call the surveyors in my backyard.
Right, so you know about it.
Yes.
Okay, so...
But why, why does it have to be secret? That's what I don't understand.
Well, I told you.
I don't think it's secret. I think that it's out in the open, that the board is considering preserving land, which is something that they do in their discretion for the benefit of all residents of Kennet Township.
If you asked anyone from Kennet Township where Rockinghorn Farm is, they would say never heard of it.
But you're talking about, but then what Scotter said was, it can, it can work against the process if the identities of the parties come out. That's why when the township is considering acquiring real property, interest in real property, the law, the law allows them to discuss that in private, that's state law. And the policy there is to protect the parties to a real estate transaction, which if the details became public, and they ultimately do, but if the details become public during the negotiations, a third party can come in and throw some kind of wrench into those negotiations because it's known. The law, not this board, not secret board of supervisors of Kennet Township, the law allows them to discuss these things in private, not in public session. Now, when they ultimately act to spend your money, that must be done in a public meeting by a vote in a public advertised session, and there's, the public is given the opportunity to comment. So this board has tried to maintain the anonymity of that to protect the parties involved, and they're allowed to do that, and they're encouraged to do that by state law, by the Sunshine Act. So that's a legal, more legalistic response to your concerns about this veil of secrecy.
So the state law says they don't have to call the property by its owner's name?
Has nothing to do with what they call the property. They don't have to call the property anything at all. They can identify it as a property. They chose to identify it as the other name so that, you know, maybe some people might know what it is, some people wouldn't. But they need to identify the property, so they called it by a different name. They don't have to identify it by anything at all because they don't really have to discuss the matter in public unless they're making a motion to spend, to acquire title of real property.
Hi, Nancy Hughes. I just have a question then about the public notice. What sort of advanced notice in terms, does the law require in terms of amount of time before a vote that notice would be made to the public?
Doesn't require any, the law doesn't require, on something like that, there are certain things that the law requires plenty of advanced notice for. Zoning amendment and subdivision and land development amendments that were heard and commented on and voted on require, the law requires, advertisement twice, two successive weeks in the newspaper, posting of properties if there's a zoning change, et cetera. On the acquisition of real property, there is no requirement for any kind of advanced notice, other than it appear on the agenda, which is on the website by policy of this board, so that the maximum number of people can know about it, and it's an agenda item and they can entertain it.
Sure. What, I know, I go on and check the agenda, but about how many days, Lisa, does it go on?
A week.
A week before?
A week in advance.
Okay, thank you.
And should this be a plug to have people send in your email, their email to you so that they'll automatically get notifications from the township, if such?
Yes, and we're also posting our agendas on Facebook now as well.
But if you send her, if you register, you'll get all the email notifications from the township about meetings or agenda, if there are emergencies and other things. And you can unsubscribe at any time, too.
Emergencies is a very important consideration.
Yes. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, there, yes, Chris?
Just one more thing. I noticed, I noticed right around the corner at Hillendale and Rosedale, the five-way intersection, a plethora of signs was installed, very clearly indicating trail crossings and new stopbars. And, but what's interesting is, I don't see any connection of any kind of pedestrian walkways with these trails. Is there, is there an intent to provide a walkway from the trail that goes around this building to connect over to the Vicente piece? And is there, are there going to be sidewalks provided? And if so, what is the timing for that to happen?
There will not be sidewalks. Right now, you can't really tell the trailhead because the trails are natural. So once the grass starts to grow, you really see where the trails enter, and there's going to be, we just put another little sign up to show where the trail entrance is on each corner of the property. But they will not, there will not be sidewalks. No, there'll just be a road trail on both sides. And yes, there are a lot of signs, but that's what we're required to put up.
Any other questions, Paul? Yes.
This is a request to consider something. I actually, I think you, Ted Moxon again. We talked about this very briefly on Election Day, and unless I am mistaken, I don't think anything has happened. As a committee person who sits outside the precinct on Election Day, I noticed a number of occasions where it would have been spectacular if the handicapped accessibility had been bolstered by a automatic door with a push button. There were a number of people trying to get into the polling booth that were in a wheelchair, and it was very, almost impossible for a person who was pushing a wheelchair to open those outer doors and also haul the wheelchair into the voting place. So I have no idea what it might cost, but did somebody look into the thought of putting an automatic door on that? And I have no idea what it's like at any of the other polling places in the township.
They're public schools.
Right. Well, church, one's in a church.
Church, school.
So, at any rate, I'm just saying, it was awfully awkward a number of times, and it just makes sense to me, you know.
No, it's nice to have the door open.
We can look into that.
Okay.
I hope you all have liked our Facebook page. Again, we got 164 likes after we sent out the emails. Cool.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Subdue?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all, well, thank you all very much.